Welcome to the Boulder Valley School District Candidate Forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Boulder County. I am Elizabeth Crowe of the League of Women Voters of Boulder County, and I am pleased to serve as the moderator for the forum tonight. The Boulder Valley School District, or BVSD, Board of Education is made up of seven elected volunteers representing seven geographic areas of our community. And this November, four seats are up for reelection in districts A, C, D, and G. District A is a contested race, and districts C, D, and G are uncontested. The format for tonight's forum will be as follows. Each candidate will have one minute for an opening remark. We will then begin with a round of questions taken from those submitted by you, our audience members. We will plan to wrap up around 8:30. Earlier fall questions have been addressed, but I don't know if that ever really happens. We will not probably be able to get to all of the questions, but it's been league practice to provide any unasked questions to candidates so they can know what's on the minds of their audience and voters. Index cards for writing down questions are available for our volunteers if you all want to wave over there. We request that you write your questions on one of those cards and catch the attention of our volunteers. We have a team of question screeners made up of League of Women Voters and District Parent Council members who will just make sure that they are legible, clear, and are not duplicative. So there may be a situation where several different questions on the same topic are combined into one, so we can try to address as many issues and topics as possible. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes to respond to each of the questions, and we'll end again with a one-minute closing statement. Please, for our audience members, refrain from clapping, booing, or otherwise showing your approval or disapproval to any of the candidates here tonight. Unlike many debates that you might be seeing on television, we do try to maintain respect for all audience members and all candidates, and so that just helps us stay on time and stay focused on the issues. Tonight's forum participants are Jay Rajagopal, Lisa Sweeney Moran, competing for the district A seat, Kathy Gebhardt, who is unopposed for district C, Stacy Ziss, unopposed for district D, and Richard Garcia, unopposed for district G. We'll begin with an opening statement from each of the candidates. The candidates are seated by district, and for contested district A, they are in the order they will appear in the general election ballot. Mr. Rajagopal will go first with his opening statement. You have one minute to respond.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jay, and I've had a lot of people ask me on the campaign trail why I'm running, because I'm well aware that I'm not the conventional candidate for school board. So I just want to tell you a little bit about myself. I was born in Elbert County, and the reason why I'm running is because I would not be where I am today without the incredible work of the public school system. I graduated college early because my school was fortunate enough to have AP tests, and there were people who were generous enough to make sure that my family was able to get those for me, even though that we had no way to pay for them. My story is one of success in the public school system, and I think that by providing counselors to all of our students, by protecting teacher pay, and by ensuring that we close the achievement gap for students of color and low-income students like myself, then we can make sure that Boulder Valley is continuing its incredible work for all of the people who live here for years to come. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa Sweeney Moran. I grew up here in Boulder, so for the last 40 years, I have been a BVSD student, a teacher, a BVSD mom, and now I'm the director of a shelter for homeless families. I didn't intend to go into teaching. Actually, I went into the law. And after a little while as a lawyer, I realized that my heart was really back in schools with kids who were struggling socially and emotionally, so I quit my job and went into teaching. Teaching led me into social services with homeless children and families, and now I run a shelter for mothers of young kids in Boulder. I'm also the mother of young kids. I've got three, two at Eisenhower and one in preschool. I'm a classroom volunteer. I'm the mom of an IEP student, and I'll be part of the district for the next 15 years as a parent. My top three priorities are all things I have professional experience with: closing the achievement gap, supporting low-income families, and increasing social-emotional supports. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to thank you all for coming out and being engaged in coming to this forum tonight. It means a lot to have our community here, so thank you very much for being here. My name is Kathy Gebhardt. I am currently the vice president of the Boulder Valley School Board. Really briefly, I'll tell you a little about my background for those of you who don't know me. I'm the current president of the Colorado Association of School Boards. I am a parent of five children who have gone through BVSD schools. I, Lisa, am also a graduate of BVSD schools, having gone to Flatirons Baseline when it was a junior high and Boulder High. The issues that are wanting me to, that are encouraging me to try to run again are closing what I call the opportunity gap, and also we have new graduation guidelines coming into effect in 2021 that will allow us to have alternative pathways and alternative routes for graduation, and I think it's really important for all of our students to have as many opportunities as they can to be successful and to be able to move forward on whatever pathway will allow them to be successful students in the future. That means focusing on special education, free and reduced lunch students, English-language learners, and other special students. So thank you very much for being here.
Hi, my name is Stacy Ziss. I know some of you because for the last 10-plus years, I was on District Parent Council and the co-chair for the past eight, and I just stepped down in the spring. I met with the superintendent once a month to discuss the issues at hand and plan meetings for our parent community, so it's great to see so many parents here. At the state level, I served on the State Advisory Council for Parent Involvement in Education, and this is a statewide council devoted to strengthening partnerships between schools and families. And professionally, I work in higher education policy and research. Through all of these experiences, I have learned how to be an active listener, how critical it is to have an open mind, and respectful team player. I tend to look at the big picture and work to create positive dialogue and solutions. Given my background and experiences, I'm ready to serve on the school board. I have a solid foundation to hit the ground running, and I look forward to the opportunity. Thank you.
Buenas noches. Yo soy Ricardo Garcia, Richard Garcia, y me estoy lanzando para estar otra campaña de candidatura para la Mesa Directiva del Instituto Escolar de Boulder. Y la razón que lo estoy haciendo es porque yo creo mucho de que los niños que hablan otro idioma necesitan más apoyo en las escuelas. Y ahorita estoy hablando español porque quiero que sientan ustedes una experiencia que lo que sienten los niños cuando están en el salón. Thank you very much. I did that intentionally because for those of you that don't speak Spanish, how many of you don't speak Spanish in the audience tonight? Some of you do. And those that did, that don't speak Spanish, what was your feeling like when I was talking to you in Spanish and you didn't understand anything that I was saying? Probably not a good feeling, right? Well, that's what a lot of kids feel in the classroom that are English-language learners, and that's why I'm running for the Board of Education.
Thank you for those opening statements. We'll now begin with the questions. I've got a good stack here from audience members, but please continue to forward your questions to our screeners at any time in the forum. We will start the next question, the first question, with candidate Sweeney Moran, and it is, "A budget is in some sense a priority list. While recognizing that some educational needs are more expensive than others, what are your thoughts on the current BVSD budget allocations? And where would you cut money if necessary, or allocate any available new money?" And again, you have 90 seconds or a minute and a half to respond, and our timers will let you know how you're doing on time.
Thank you. So first, program evaluation is the key to answering these questions, and when we have the data that we're working on gathering about what's working and what isn't, we can answer more concretely all of these things and talk about which programs we need to sundown, which we need to grow because they're incredibly successful, and which to tailor. Having said that, I think our budget priorities should always focus on the students with the highest needs. And when we're looking at schools and at students that aren't achieving at the same levels as others and that need additional supports, our budget should be focusing on finding ways to bring them up. I think it's a case of a rising tide raises all boats, and there's a lot of work that we can do in schools that have, are on the bottom half of the achievement gap if we're willing to focus the resources to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Gebhardt.
As Lisa mentioned, we are in the process at the district of doing an analysis of our programs, but until we get the results of that, we still have to take a hard look at our budget. And so what we've done is we've tried to make sure that there are lots of places for the community to engage to let us know where they think things are working, when they think things aren't working, because it's a budget for all of us, and I think it's really important that everybody has a say in how they think these dollars should be spent. We also rely on staff to help us guide the budget prioritizations that we have, and I think that listening to the community through DAC and through SACS and through community forums has been really important. And fortunately, we haven't had to cut anything yet, but should we have to, I think we have a good process for going out to the community to find out what we might need to cut. As far as adding, I think adding supports around social-emotional learners, around some of our special populations, as Richard has pointed out, our ELL population, our special ed population, and our, I said special ed and free and reduced lunches and ELL. So I think those are the populations that need additional resources as well to make sure that they can have the opportunities they need to be successful. So thank you for the question, and we'll carry on.
Thank you. Candidate Ziss.
So the question said that the budget is really a priority list, and we also have another priority list, and that's strategic plan. So this, in my mind, the strategic plan is the priorities that we're setting forth for our district, and as such, the budget needs to align with the strategic plan. Otherwise, the strategic plan is just out there doing nothing. So I feel that the budget should be aligned with a strategic plan that has set out priorities that we should fund. Now, there are other things embedded in the strategic plan about partnerships and about helping the most vulnerable populations and all of those things, and the program evaluation that's already been discussed. So I think as far as the budget and the strategic plan together make a priority list, and yes, all the stakeholders should also be involved, which they were during the strategic planning process also. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Garcia.
The budget allocation process, dollars are distributed on an equal basis in Boulder Valley School District as well as most other school districts. So that means that a school, let's say, for example, a school in Lafayette and a school in Table Mesa, they get the same amount of money, doesn't matter whether the kids have different learning needs or not, and I'm talking about the general fund. So I really would like to see if somehow we could get into another process of, another way of distributing the dollars where it's not going to be equal. It will be equitable in terms of equitable distribution of funds. This is a big problem because right now, if you look at our budget, you're looking at about 90, 95% of the dollars that is already allocated, and it's mostly for staff and, well, staff. And you've got about maybe 10% or 5% of the budget that makes that priority list, and how that 5% is spent, I think, is something that we hear from our community, we hear from our staff, we hear from our own priorities that we set. So it's not a whole lot of money that you're prioritizing, actually.
Thank you. And candidate Rajagopal.
I want to echo what candidate Garcia was saying here, because when we are talking about the budget, one of the most important things is understanding where those dollars are being distributed. And so to me, one of the first priorities should be ensuring that we continue and potentially expand the board policy of taking funds that have been gifted to the schools and making sure that portions of those funds are going to schools with a high need, with high ELL populations, and that generally need that funding to make sure that they are able to maintain their quality of service. I also think that when we look at the budget as a whole, then we have the opportunity, and we are going to see this on the ballot this year, that with the hard work and advocacy of the board and parents and parental groups, then we may be able to see that budget increase from the state as measures like Proposition CC move forward. And I think that with our successful advocacy, then we can continue to push that, and I think that that should be one of the main priorities of the board outside of actual policy. As far as which programs to expand and support, I think that special ed programs, free and reduced lunch programs should be kept at the highest possible standard, and to do that, we need to make sure that those programs are adequately funded. It is a matter of need, and we should be focused and prioritize that need.
Thank you. For the next question, we'll start with candidate Gebhardt, and it is about charter schools. What is your perspective on charter schools and the future of new charter schools in the BVSD district?
Well, Boulder Valley School District is very fortunate in having a variety of charter schools to meet a variety of the different kinds of learning needs that our students have. We have charter schools that serve very high-performing students, and we have charter schools that serve our very lowest and most at-risk students. And I think having charter schools that help fill the different niches that these students need the resources for is a really important role for Boulder Valley and for charter schools to fill. I think that for the question about new charter schools coming in, we need to assess what need they're addressing and what the need is of the community, as well as the overall need of the district before we decide. There isn't really a cap or a limit to the charter schools. The limit is exactly what the community needs as well. So I think there's a very important and vital role for charter schools in Boulder Valley School District, but I think we need to make sure that they're serving all students and that they're serving all the different needs, and that we don't have charter schools come in and only serve a specific small population. What we've seen with some charter schools is that they serve various populations of special needs kids and English-language learners and free and reduced lunch students, and I'd like to see if they do come in the district, that they are able to serve all of the students and all of the various needs that all our other schools address.
Thank you. Candidate Ziss.
I would first look at the data to see if our enrollment supports a new school, and then look at what Kathy just said about the needs of the populations. Is there a need for another charter school that goes beyond the enrollment? It could be something programmatic that we don't already offer. If the data doesn't support another charter school, or the programs don't support another charter school, it seems to me that that would be the answer. If one of those is yes, then what's the next step? It's my understanding that the board recently revised their charter application, and there are policies that a new school would have to abide by, and it would seem to me that when that happens, they would have to abide by all of those policies, not just the ones they would like to. But if they want to be part of the BVSD community, they need to adapt to the policies that are set forth in the application. So to recap, data is really important to see if we need one, and then our policies next.
Thank you. Candidate Garcia.
I think the original intent of charter schools way back when was more to see what kind of charter schools the community would develop. That original intent, I was full support of in terms of charter schools. It's kind of moved a little bit now where the charter, the major charter administrative companies, the for-profit companies, I think are ruining the original charter school intent, quite frankly. So I agree with board member Kathy Gebhardt in terms of making sure that charter schools are required to meet the needs of the Boulder Valley School community, meaning that they should, we should make sure that they include how they're going to bring low-income kids into their charter schools, English-language learners into their charter schools, et cetera, and not just the cream of the crop.
Thank you. Candidate Rajagopal.
I think that the situation that we have seen with charter schools in Boulder Valley thus far has not been to the high standards that we hold for our school district. While there are some that definitely serve high-performing students and students who are having more difficulty struggling, I think that it's important in most matters to try and ensure that we have mechanisms in the broader range of public schools to make sure that we are handling these issues, because my concern is when students go to a charter school for a specialized need, that they are siloed in a way that isn't beneficial to their education on the whole. When Peak to Peak opened up in East Boulder County, it additionally concerns me the level of stratification that we saw between that school and neighboring schools in the area along racial demographics. And I think that we need to be very cognizant of that stratification as we look at accepting new schools into the district. With that addition to the fact that we have falling enrollment rates right now, then I do not think that that is the conversation that we will be having over the next couple of years, whether to be opening several new schools. But if we do end up having the conversation on those grounds, then I think the first priority has to be that the standards of the Boulder Valley School District are the floor, not the ceiling. We have to ensure that any charter school that is sanctioned through the district is meeting and hopefully exceeding the standards that we are putting forward for all other schools.
Thank you. Candidate Sweeney Moran.
Thank you. Boulder has a lot of great charter schools, so many that it's not clear to me that there's a need for more. Charter schools don't do a great job of supporting students with IEPs. Statistically, they have much lower enrollments of Black and Latinx students, and if our free and reduced lunch students can get in, they don't really have a way to get there. I don't think it's the best use of our resources. I would rather see our dollars stay in our local schools where they can go to improving our IEP programs, our gifted and talented programs, our music and art programs, so that everybody has the excellent experience at their neighborhood school that they're hoping to get at a charter. As a parent, I definitely understand what it means to want the best for your kids, but I think our neighborhood schools can absolutely provide that for our kids. And not only can they provide the gifted and talented programming and the music and the art and the IEPs and all the rest, but they can also provide it an environment with diverse learners, an inclusive environment that looks like the community they live in, where they have the opportunity to learn what it means to be citizens of the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Now for the next question, we'll start with candidate Ziss, and it is, "What will you do to help reduce the achievement gap to better position students of color for success?"
Thank you for that question. Obviously, we know that our achievement gap is very big. It's been that way. It didn't happen overnight, and it's not going to be fixed overnight. I believe that the strategic plan speaks to really being committed to doing something about the achievement gap, as does the organization that Dr. Anderson has put forth. I think there are a few things that we can do right away. One is, we already have that, and that is buy-in from our leaders and from the community. It sounds to me like there's a pretty big consensus that this is something we should do, and it's important to do that. I think another thing we can do is look at some schools that are moving the needle even a little and see what they are doing. What strategies are they using? When I was at the DAC meeting a couple weeks ago, there was a school in particular that had really good scores. Well, what are they doing there that has made their scores improve? What's going on? We don't have to reinvent the wheel if we have a school that's already showing some success. I also think that fostering stronger family-school partnerships can really help in this regard. When families are involved, homework is done more often, absenteeism is down, and graduation rates go up. So having a stronger partnership between the school and the family can really help with the achievement gap.
Thank you. Candidate Garcia.
Boy, that's a question that I think we've been dealing with for many, 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 many I think the school district is doing some things right now, trying to reduce the achievement The work that the University of Virginia is doing with a couple of our schools here will hopefully give us more information on if some of the things that they're doing will work. But the achievement gap does not begin when the kids enter school. It starts way before they enter school. And I firmly believe that getting families engaged with their children at the very onset will do a lot to close the achievement gap or even prevent the gap from happening. We do a lot of work with community groups that will hopefully bring in some wonderful results in terms of closing the achievement gap. One particular group that I want to mention is Engage Latino Parents Advancing Student Outcomes. They're doing a lot of work helping parents navigate the school system, giving them all the tools that they need to make sure that their kids, when they enter kindergarten, are ready for kindergarten. Now, we've got to make sure that the schools are ready to receive these kids.
Thank you. Candidate Rajagopal.
I think that candidate Garcia has it dead on that we have been working on this issue for a very long time now, and I empathize with the frustrations of people in this district who have not seen any meaningful movement in the achievement gap for quite some time. And to a certain degree, I think we have to come at this with the understanding that what I think most educators will be able to tell you right off the bat, which is that the best predictor of a student's success is not how many resources we are putting in, but what their family's income is and what their parental education level is. Nonetheless, I think that we have done some extraordinary work in this district, targeting specific schools and trying to make sure that we are investing in their success and that we are giving them the resources that they need to succeed, and I would like to see that continue. I think what Superintendent Anderson has been able to do with Sanchez Elementary, removing it from turnaround status within the period of a couple of months, is a testament to the power of this district and the resources that we have to bear. So I think that when we have the budgetary ability, then we should be doing as much as possible to invest in these students as early as possible so that we can ensure that from the moment that they're in school, even though they may already have fallen behind in some aspects, we are able to catch them up and provide them what they need.
Thank you. Candidate Sweeney Moran.
So here are some concrete things that I think would be useful. Black and Latinx students can use more Black and Latinx teachers, administrators, and staff. We know that when predominantly white teachers are serving non-white students, they under-identify gifted students and over-identify students as having issues. When we're looking at curriculums that are going to match the experiences of our students, we want to have voices in the room, a part in making that curriculum, that are also familiar with that experience. For our English-language learners, more bilingual teachers in students and programs is absolutely what they need, and it's a great solution because it helps everybody. Students who are speaking Spanish as a first language benefit from bilingual programs, and so do our students who speak English as a first language and are hoping to get a leg up. As Richard demonstrated earlier, the world is becoming increasingly multilingual, and we want our kids to be the same way. For our free and reduced lunch students, we can do more to support their families. Things, for example, like increasing food banks in or near schools, having social workers who have a couple hours a month where they can work with families, having onsite laptops with internet access for our poor families that don't have that at home, so they can work on job searches, on peak applications, on SNAP, on TANF, on WIC, and on hotlines that they can use while they're on those computers to call for assistance. Finally, with our IEP kiddos, I think we need more one-on-one and small-group education, but we need to do that in a way that we're not increasing the gap by pulling out from classes. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Gebhardt.
When I hear the question, "What will we do to close the achievement gap?", for years I have tried to reframe that as, "How are we going to close what I call opportunity gaps?", because the achievement gap in my mind focuses too much on the student and not on what the school district and the system can do to help that student accomplish and be the best that they can be. And so by looking at what I like to call the opportunity gaps, I think there are a couple of things we can do. I think at different school levels, there's different needs. We need to make sure that in elementary school, our students are getting rigorous. rigorous and challenging curriculum so that by the time they reach eighth and ninth grade, they aren't tracked into low-track classes. And we see that happening way too often with our free and reduced lunch kids and our Latino kids, that by the time they reach ninth grade, they're not even able to take advanced coursework so that they are tracked into low-track, lower-performing classes. I think we can focus on professional training for our teachers because we need to focus more on trauma-informed instruction, which I think we could do to help our teachers better meet the needs of our students. I think we could do additional emotional, social-emotional support, and I think we can do better with more wraparound services. For example, at Arapahoe, we have a dental clinic that comes in that helps our students with their dental needs. And I think if we could figure out how to harness the great power of this community to help provide more services for all of our students, I think we could help close that opportunity gap quickly.
Thank you. For question four, we'll start with candidate Garcia. And the topic is around growth and demographic changes in our community. Demographics projections may have BVSD flat for years to come. How do you feel about bringing out-of-district students to our school which have excess capacity?
Very good question. We're going to have to do something because if we don't, we're going to get deeper and deeper in the hole as it relates to sustaining even what we have today. I think we're like about maybe, if I'm not mistaken, a couple hundred students short already. So yeah, and I asked that question the other day, too. I said, well, how are we going to attract more students into Boulder Valley School District? Well, bringing in more kids from out-of-district, I think, will help. There are some schools that do that right now, but we are declining enrollment, and we need to do something creative to be able to do that.
Thank you. Candidate Roger Gopal?
I alluded to this briefly earlier when we were discussing charter schools, but I think over the next several years, one of the big issues that our district is going to have to face is what to do as enrollment begins to decline. Because frankly, the young families that would come into many areas, buy up homes, and start sending their kids to school, they are not able to afford property in large swaths of Boulder, so we are not necessarily going to have that as an opportunity. And I think that it is incredibly important that we address this issue now while we still have time because otherwise, the conversation shifts to closing schools and laying off teachers. And I think that's something that we all absolutely want to avoid. So bringing students in from out-of-district, I think, is an adequate and proper solution to making sure that we continue to have the students that we need for our district to survive. Because we're seeing declining enrollments now, but this is not just a now problem. When a problem starts in the school district, then it is going to travel through the full 12 years that those students are there. And we need to begin addressing this immediately so that we can ensure that BVSD continues to have the base of support that needs for our teachers to be doing the best work that they can. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Sweeney Moran?
There are lots of students who would love to come to BVSD. We have a lot to offer, and I think it's fantastic we can offer it to more folks. I think the trouble lies in how much we risk alienating taxpayers who don't have kids in schools who feel frustrated about this system. And I think we need to do more community outreach with our older folks in the area, finding more ways to bring them down to school, to be a part of the carnivals and the field days and the other events we have, to wrap them into our communities so that if we're going to expand our out-of-district population, all of the people in our school who are taxpayers are excited about that idea and excited about our schools and the work that we do. Thank you.
Candidate Gephardt?
Some of our schools already have a fairly large out-of-district enrollment, such as in Broomfield and some of our charter schools. But I think we have to be careful what we wish for. If you think about trying to solve a problem of flat or declining enrollment by just bringing students in, without considering the impact it will have on transportation and on other infrastructure issues, we already have a hard enough time getting around town if you think about it at three o'clock or eight in the morning. So I think that we need to learn how to live in a budget that may have flat or declining enrollment and figure out how we're going to do that, because I don't think we can solve the problem by just having students come in from across the district. That doesn't mean that I'm against having students come in, but there's also a direct impact on our mill levies and our taxpayers, as Lisa's mentioned, that I think we need to pay attention to. So I don't think that that's a solution, as much as just figuring out how we're going to live within our own budget and how we're going to deal with flat or declining enrollment over the next five to 10 years.
And candidate Zis?
I would like to look at the data and see where the enrollments are declining and in what schools. There are several schools that you'd never know that enrollment was declining right now. And so while I know there are several schools that are not at capacity, we also have schools that are way over capacity. So I would like to see what the breakdown of that is and how open enrollment has contributed to that. I know my son at Boulder High told me yesterday that in one class, there's not even a desk for him. And today, he was late for another class because there was too many people in the hallway and he couldn't get through. So we have an overcrowded problem in some of our schools. So I think it'd be a good idea to really assess the situation. Where are the overcrowded schools? Where are the schools that are not at capacity? I've talked for years, maybe, about looking at the lines of where the neighborhood schools are. There are some schools that perhaps could be expanded so that more students would go to that neighborhood school. I think there are other things that we can look at.
Thank you all. For the next question, we'll start with candidate Roger Gopal. And it's about Proposition CC. If Prop CC is passed, how would you, as a school board member, like to see the funding provided spent in the district?
Well, I think if Proposition CC passes, first off, to answer the question, I think that we should focus it, as we have talked about repeatedly this night, on areas of high need. So expanding those bilingual and dual immersion programs, making sure that we are adequately caring for our ELL students, our special ed students, that our schools are equipped for waivers for students, for exams, free and reduced lunch, et cetera. I also think that that opens up a lot of opportunities for capital improvement. Some of the issues that have gone on this year and that have drawn the district's attention as we deal with students who are overheating in the classrooms because we've had difficulty allocating the money to fix the air conditioning, I think that these are all issues that we could start to make some serious headway on if Proposition CC passes. But more than that, I think that if Proposition CC passes, then it proves that there is space for the board to advocate for a variety of these measures on a statewide level so that we can start peeling back the issues that have crippled education in this state for two decades and that we can begin moving the needle on a variety of different issues as we start to unshackle our budget. So I hope that, I'm very glad that the board passed a resolution supporting Proposition CC, and I think that it can only strengthen our budget, and we should continue exploring similar measures.
Thank you. Candidate Sweeney Moran?
I think the first thing is additional bilingual teachers and schools and supports. Number two, as I mentioned earlier, finding more ways to support our free and reduced lunch families. There are a lot of things that we can do, and I think one thing that we sometimes don't think about is that in 2019, we don't really have a lot of community centers anymore. People generally don't spend time gathering at churches and town halls the way they used to, but they still gather at schools. And that gives us a real opportunity to connect with families and to increase the services that we can offer to families in need who aren't sure where to start, or maybe who do know where to start but feel a little nervous doing it. And third, I'd like to do a targeted increase of social workers at schools that need them, looking at where we're under-identifying students as needing social work help, helping teachers there to learn, and coaches and administrators learn how to do a better job of spotting kids who need a little extra help, and then doing handoffs to social workers, and increase those in places where we need them. Because the number of things that social workers can help with in our schools is substantial, with free and reduced lunch students, with our IEP students, with families that are going through personal troubles at home, and again, they're not sure where to turn. Social workers do an enormous amount of good in our schools. So those would be my top three. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Gephardt?
I was quite happy when the board agreed to support Proposition CC, but I think there's a couple warning signs along the way. We have to be very careful. We have to understand that these are non-recurring dollars and that we cannot use those dollars for any kind of salaries, even though the campaign talks about teachers and implies that the money could be used for salaries. So I think we need to be really careful that we don't over-promise on this because we've seen with the marijuana revenues that people will start to believe we've solved all the problems there are in school finance if we were to pass Prop CC. So what I'd like to see is, I'd like to see us engage our bond oversight committee because they are ready to look at all of the unmet needs that we have. And we've heard a lot about air conditioning and other unmet needs, that the bond dollars simply aren't going to be sufficient to cover. I'd like to see us look at additional materials for the classroom because I think we've fallen behind on literacy materials and other materials for our classrooms because that's usually the first thing we cut when we go through a recession because we want to take the money, cut it not in the classroom, but cut it in places where we think it has the least impact on students. But I think we're behind on that. So I'd like to see us engage the community in how we spend that money, but I think we need to be really careful because I don't think it's going to be a whole, it's money that we won't get this year, it's money we might get next year, and we don't know about the year after that. So we need to make sure we spend it on one-time things.
Thank you. Candidate Zis?
I was going to say something similar about the non-recurring costs, the non-recurring programs and money that we're going to get. It will just be a one-time thing. So I've heard over and over that, especially with the new literacy program, that there isn't sustained professional development across the district for the new, I think it's the Wilson Phonics program for K through 2. And perhaps it could be used for some more intense professional development for the teachers. It was rolled out last year, and I think this is the first year that it's really fully implemented. But there's a lot of disparity amongst, even within a school and across the district. So I think the dollars could be used really wisely with some targeted professional development, among other things that would help our highest priority students.
Thank you. Candidate Garcia?
I agree 100% with what Kathy said because it is one-time money. We're not going to be able to rely on it the next year, the following year, et cetera. So I think we need to be real, real careful in terms of how we're going to use that money. You know, things like even what Stacy just said in terms of the dyslexia materials and stuff like that. We need to beef that up, and hopefully, after beefing all that stuff up, we might be able to release some of the other money that we have someplace else so that we can continue using that for salary upgrades and all of that. But it is one-time dollars, folks, and we need to be real, real creative on how we're going to use it.
Thank you. For the next question, we will start with candidate Sweeney Moran, and it's regarding sex education and gender identity. Last session, the legislature passed a comprehensive sex education bill that stated that if schools teach sex ed, it must be, quote, "evidence-based, culturally sensitive, and includes positive youth development principles, comprehensive, and is medically accurate." Given that, what is your position about inclusion of gender identity discussions in health ed and on parental notification?
As a parent, I talk to my kids about everything. I don't think that there's a wrong thing for them to hear. There's a degree of age appropriateness in the way we convey information, but it's my job as their parent to teach them what the world is actually like. And that involves conversations from as early as they can hear it about sex, about transgender folks, about gay and lesbian folks, and about what the world really looks like. I think it's important that we talk to our kids about this. And if we do the thing where we're going to wait until we think they're old enough to hear it, we know, and study after study has shown, that it's far too late and that they've already gotten this information somewhere else. So I think if we're going to be good parents, good teachers, and good stewards of our community, we want to convey information as honestly and accurately and directly as possible. And I don't think that it's the sort of thing that somebody should be able to opt out of. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Gephardt?
Well, this was a very important topic that the board addressed last legislative session. And I agree that there's a level of age appropriateness for what can be addressed at each level of school. But I do believe that we address this in an appropriate way, which allows parents at the elementary school to be able to opt their children out of certain sex education classes and certain topics. But I don't believe that talking about transgender and sex education, as it was tried to be framed, is a controversial issue. I think, as Lisa says, it's the world that we live in, and I think it's important that our students learn it in an appropriate way because otherwise, they're going to be learning it on the playground or in other places where they may not be learning it in a way that I think will help them look at our whole society as a whole and as each student as a whole. And so I think it's really important that we continue to teach, there are really good curriculums out there that we have adopted that are age-appropriate, that we are allowed to, that we are teaching in each of our schools, and I support that curriculum, and I support the teaching of these issues in our schools, with the ability to let parents know when they need to on certain topics, that they are able to opt their children out.
Thank you. Candidate Zis?
I agree that gender should not be a controversial issue. Families come from all over to move to Boulder, to have their students go to school here because of our inclusion and our nondiscrimination policy. And we should embrace that. And as such, gender is not controversial, being trans is not controversial. I agree that with some age-appropriate, it should all be age-appropriate, and that there are some topics, such as what Kathy suggested, that parents can opt out in elementary school. However, I've met families that have moved here specifically because of Boulder Valley's values regarding trans and gender issues. And we should embrace that because we are a model for the country in that regard, and we should be proud of that.
Thank you. Candidate Garcia?
Yeah, I agree 100% with what everybody else said here. I have a daughter, she's a lesbian, and I often think about, you know, she came out way after she graduated from high school, after she graduated from college, even though we did know. But she was trying to protect herself. And I can always think back in terms of, I wonder what she was going through when she was going to school, knowing that in order to be herself, she couldn't be herself because she needed to be protected, and she wanted to protect herself. And that's just the LGBTQ piece. And the gender identity, I think the controversial piece is what we all make it, you know, if we don't agree with it, we make it controversial. I am delighted that the state legislature decided to pass a law and make it a little bit stronger than what it was before. And yeah, age-appropriate, I think, is definitely, we need to make sure that parents, if they see some kind of activity that they don't agree with, that they do have an opt, a way to opt out their children from that particular activity.
Thank you. And candidate Roger Gopal?
So I actually worked in the state legislature this last session when HB 1032 was being discussed and passed. And while I am incredibly glad that everybody in this room can agree that LGBTQ issues should not be controversial, I was there seeing the people who insisted that they should be. And I think that ironically, comprehensive sex education is the best instrument we have against prejudice. When we teach people from a young age what our differences are, then it helps them to understand and accept their peers. And as such, I think that it is an extraordinary movement forward that we have been able to pass this bill and that we are going to be implementing it in this district. Age appropriateness is obviously something that we should take into consideration, but this is, on the whole, an incredibly useful program because this really is fundamentally not an issue of information. It's a civil rights issue, and I am proud to see that we are on the right side of that.
Thank you. The next question is also regarding educational curriculum. And we'll start with candidate Gephardt for this one. What is your opinion on important topics to cover in social studies and science? Do you think there are topics that should be cut out or regulated from the current social studies or science curriculum? And is your personal philosophy on this topic aligned with or different from BVSD's current philosophy? philosophy?
How long do I have to answer that question? So we have different issues when we're looking at science or social studies, but I understand, I think, the gist of the question. We have state standards that are important that we teach to in Boulder Valley School District, both on social studies and on science, and I think it's really important that we follow those state standards, but that we give teachers the flexibility in their classrooms to be able to use their creativity and their knowledge to teach to those standards. I think that, I don't know of any issues that I've heard of in any classrooms, and I have to say, as a school board member, it's not my job to be micromanaging what the curriculum issues are in any day-to-day class, so I can't tell you that I know that what every teacher is teaching and what's going on in every classroom, but I've not heard of any issues that have caused me concern that teachers are going astray from not following our standards and the curriculum that we've adopted. So we do have flexibility in that. I don't know that my personal philosophy really matters. I think as long as we're following what we're supposed to be following with the state guidelines and with what our teachers and our administrators are telling us we need to follow, then I think that's where we need to be going and not necessarily thinking of what our own personal ideologies are in these issues.
Thank you. Candidate Sis?
The curriculum is based on the state standards. I'm not a teacher, I've never been a teacher. My only experience of classroom topics are through my son, and so, you know, I'm not, I'm not going to just make up an answer to this question because I don't, I don't know. I know that we teach to the standards, the standards are set by Colorado Department of Education, and I've not heard of any controversial issues either. And I'm not previously a board member, so I wouldn't have been privy to those anyway. And I, and I would also say that the role of the board is to set policy, to approve a budget, and to supervise the superintendent. So those are our three roles, and as Kathy said, none of those are about managing what's happening in each individual classroom. But I think as long as the teachers are setting, are teaching to the standards so that our students know what they're supposed to know, we're in pretty good shape.
Thank you. Candidate Garcia?
You know, there's a, in our, in our state constitution, it requires schools to teach the history and culture of Native Americans, Hispanics, African Americans, et cetera, and I believe the state legislature passed another law that requires the school districts to start teaching that because even though it was in the state constitution, a lot of school districts were not teaching that. And I also believe that what I'm, what I'm hearing is if you open up a social studies textbook, for example, in many, many occasions, you may not find yourself represented in that social studies textbook. So I think we need to be looking at those particular textbooks and see if in fact we are using textbooks that represent the society that we live in today. And I'm looking forward to seeing what we're going to be doing as it relates to our curriculum once we start looking a little bit deeper into the newly passed state legislative bill that requires school districts to teach the history and culture of African Americans, Latinos, and Native Americans, and Asian Americans.
Thank you. Candidate Rajakopal?
Thank you to whoever asked this question because I think it is incredibly important that we understand that while the curriculum is set and while these measures are in place, as candidate Garcia pointed out, and as the legislature has acknowledged, that doesn't necessarily mean that we are instituting the best culturally responsive practices when it comes to our curriculum. So when it comes to the history of Native Americans, African Americans, Latinx, then I think that we can be doing a lot more to make sure that they are represented in the way that we teach history. I think that we can be in a unique position in Colorado to dismantle some of the Eurocentric view that we teach history through. I think that we should be respectful of independence in the classroom for our teachers, but nonetheless, we can have a certain level of scrutiny to ensure that we, as is mentioned in the strategic plan, that we have culturally responsive principles and best practices. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Sweeney Moran?
I was in my twenties, I think, before I really understood with accuracy what racism in the US looks like. And I think a lot of that is because a lot of the education I had was about Martin Luther King and Rosa Parks rather than things like the 1619 Project. I would love it if our schools were being honest and direct as possible with our students about the structural and institutional racism that has underpinned so much of this country. I think it's important to be direct and honest, not only to understand history, but to make better decisions moving forward. And I would love to believe that my kids don't learn anything in a classroom that they have to unlearn later. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next question is regarding school members, school board members' relationship with other people inside and outside the school district. How would you approach a board member's relationship with parents and parent groups, BVSD employees and its unions, the superintendent, and other administration, and community residents? We'll start this question with candidate Sis.
As I mentioned in my opening statement, I think it's really important to be an active listener. As part of the school board, there are a lot of stakeholders that want your attention, and I think it's really important to listen to what everyone's saying, and that includes your fellow board members, to be respectful and listen to what they say, parent groups, teachers. First and foremost, I think we need to listen. Also, I think it's really important to be respectful of other views and keep an open mind, but at the same time to stay true to your values and what you bring to the table. I think, I mean, obviously, the goal is to have consensus among the school board, but that's not always going to happen, and so I think being a really good team player, keeping an open mind, and being a good listener are what we can do to all the stakeholders that have a say in what's going on in our schools.
Thank you. Candidate Garcia?
El respeto al derecho es la paz. Respecting the rights of others is peace, and I approach life that way. You know, I like to respect the rights of everybody and understanding where people are coming from and work with individuals the way I would work with, with my own family, for example, respecting them and listening to them and understanding where they're coming from, and trying to react after I listen to what people are wanting to come across with. We have many, many people in Boulder Valley School District, you know, from our low-income Latino families all the way to our very affluent families, and we're all different. So I think we need to make sure that when we're talking and we're, we're working with individuals, that we keep that in mind, you know, we keep in mind that we need to be respectful, we need to be understanding, we need to be truthful in order to gain other people's trust. So el respeto al derecho es la paz, that's what I say.
Thank you. Candidate Rajakopal?
I want to echo some of what's already been said here because I think that it is incredibly important that we draw in as many stakeholders as possible and that we are as involved with all of the teachers and parents who make up the district as we can be, but I think that has to come with a recognition that there are some folks who don't always have the capacity to be as involved as they would like to be. And so for parents of lower-income students who have to work basically 24/7, then it is important for us to be meeting them where they're at. So we should be reaching out to them as much as possible, having as many community meetings and forums as we can so that they have the opportunity to give their input, because these are people that we might not otherwise hear from. And I think it's incredibly important for us to be able to advance equity that we are hearing from everybody who has a stake in our decisions as a board. So I think that a large part of that has to do with making sure that we develop better outreach efforts and that we are being as inclusive as possible when it comes to folks who we might not otherwise be able to hear from. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Sweeney Moran?
Yeah, it's important that we are an ear too and a voice for the community. As the mother of elementary school kids, I'm at my school every single day, interacting with folks there, parents and teachers. As a local, I've got friends with kids across the district, probably not every school, but certainly every city. And as the director of a homeless shelter for families, I spend a lot of time with very low-income families, working through their challenges generally and also specifically with BVSD. So hearing what people need and talking about those things with them is clearly the most important thing. And I would add that being available to talk to people who are very displeased with decisions that have been made on school board with the way things have gone is, I think, another really important aspect. And being there to sit and to hear even when it's not enjoyable and to be a part of those hard conversations is, I think, the other key. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Gephardt?
I think one of the hardest jobs I, one of the hardest things I've faced in my last four years on the school board is how, trying to make sure that there's some way to hear the voices that aren't in the room, the voices that aren't the loudest that come to the school board meetings, somewhat like what Jay said. I think that that's really a challenge because many of our community, in fact, I'd say most of our community in some ways, doesn't have the ability or the engagement to come and talk to school board members or to send me an email and ask me to meet for coffee. I don't think I've ever turned anybody down, I shouldn't say that, but that's asked to go to coffee because I feel as an elected official, that's my job. The coffee shops around Boulder are my office, but I think that's just a very small percentage of what the community voice needs to be out there. I think we need to be really careful when we talk about having a relationship with employees as school board members. We have one employee, and that's the superintendent, so we have to be really careful when people come and talk to us about different issues they have with different employees in the district. We have to make sure there's a chain of command and policy that people follow about that. Doesn't mean that we don't care, it just means that as a school board member, that is not what I'm, as Stacy said, we have three jobs and that's not one of them. But I think being engaged in the community, for example, I go to the Parity Graduations, which remind me of Quintineras when you go, they're awesome, it's one way to engage with the community, but there, I'm always looking for new ways to engage with those voices that we don't get to hear when we're at the board table and when we're out in the community.
Thank you all. The next question, we'll start with candidate Garcia, and it's regarding class size. Where does lowering class size fall on your list of priorities? And what do you believe could be sacrificed, if necessary, in order to lower class sizes at the elementary level?
I'm married to a classroom teacher, she taught for 28 years in Boulder Valley School District, so class size is very, very important to me. I do believe that the less number of kids you have in your classroom, the more time you can give to them, especially if you have a very diverse classroom where you're dealing with, you're working with English language learners, low-income kids, kids with special ed needs, et cetera, the less number of kids you have in that classroom, the better the work you're going to be doing. Now, ask me about what would be the right number in terms of class size. Now, that's debatable. Many people think that if you lower it by one pupil, it's not going to be enough to make differences, but I bet you that teacher says it's going to be enough. So, yeah, the class size, I think, is high on my list. What would I give up to reduce class size? Wow, that's, that's a huge one, too, because we need everything that we have going here in Boulder Valley School District. We, we just can't say, okay, we're going to get rid of this in order to decrease the class size. So it's, it's tough. But I think we need to start, keep thinking in terms of what can we do to reduce class size for Boulder Valley School District because we know that for a fact that, yes, if you do have less number of kids, kids are going to learn better, teachers are going to teach better, et cetera. So in terms of giving up other stuff, we'll have to look at that.
Thank you. Candidate Rajakopal?
I was talking with a former member of the board recently who told me something that I hadn't realized up until then, which is that class size, they said, was actually linear. So the difference between 14 students in a classroom and 15 is felt by everyone in that room. So I, I think that that has to be an utmost priority for the district moving forward. And I think that we have a lot of opportunities when we are able to lower class sizes, we are able to have teachers who can give more individualized attention to the students who need it most. I think that goes a long way towards closing the opportunity gap so that those students aren't drowned out in a classroom where they're not able to get the attention that they need to succeed. And as far as trade-offs, I mean, when we lower class sizes, that means that we need to have more teachers to teach all those different classes. So I am hopeful that Proposition CC and other budgetary reforms over the next coming years will make that more immediately accessible and increase our availability to do that. We have a strong budgetary burden, and I think that any way that we can circumvent that to lower class sizes, we should, but balancing that against the other priorities that we have is obviously going to be difficult in coming years.
Thank you. Candidate Sweeney Moran?
Last year, one of my kiddos was, was one of three kiddos in his classroom that had an IEP, and it took a lot of time. And that classroom teacher we had, she was phenomenal, and she worked incredibly hard, and she had a really tough year balancing that classroom. This year, she's got four more students, but zero kids who need that much attention, and she's having a much easier year. I say this because I think that adhering to a specific number is less important to me than working on the kids in our classrooms who need those additional supports. I think it's more valuable to make sure that our IEP kids, our English language learning kids, and other kids who need so much support in the classroom that they're taking time away are getting the support they need than talking about class size number as the most important factor. Thank you.
And candidate Gephardt?
I am in favor of targeted class size reductions when we can make it work within our budget. The literature is really strong in supporting smaller class sizes in K through 2, and I think that we are trying to accomplish that, especially in our higher-needs schools. But there's other places where we need to look at class size issues, and also our counselors. Our counselors at our high school serve a workload of somewhere between 500 and 600 students, which I don't know how you could possibly do that. I know, for example, my daughter, who's a senior, her counselor's going to write her a letter of recommendation, and he's met her exactly one time. Doesn't, no fault of his, it's just the workload. I know that we've tried at the high school to keep our class sizes limited for ninth grade for language arts and for math, which then is like you squeeze a bubble and, or a balloon, and it comes out the other side, so the class sizes in the upper levels are higher. That's a trade-off I think we're willing to make. So I think that in an era of declining budgets, we need to make that a priority, but I think we can target it in ways that we won't have to have dramatic budget cuts in ways that can support our children, but I think we need to have a broader conversation around what class size and counselors are doing to our students.
Candidate Sis?
So years ago, when we had some pretty deep budget cuts, I think it was 2011, 2010, 2011, at my son's elementary school, the principal brought in this school accountability committee, of which I was on, and teachers, and we had a big work session about what can we cut? And we had class size, all the parents went in there thinking we were going to cut class sizes, they were not going to give up, that was their fight. There was all sorts of things on the board. We could give up the media specialist, we could give up the art teacher, whatever it was. And most of the parents there said, no, we want smaller class sizes. And this has stuck with me. One of the teachers stood up, and he said, I can handle a few extra kids in my class. What I can't do without is a media specialist. I can't do my job without a media specialist. And that just has always stuck with me because these, these decisions can't be made in isolation. And so while I think most people agree that smaller class sizes are a good idea, there's also so many other dominos that happen when you decide that. And that story just has, I've brought that with me for, I mean, that was a long time ago, and I just always remember that story because it changed the minds of a lot of the parents that were in the room that day.
Thank you. For the next question, we'll start with candidate Rajakopal, and it's about school safety. It's a three-part question. What if What if anything would you change about current school safety policies? What do you feel is the role of school resource officers? And what is your position on arming other staff members?
I'm going to start with that last one because it's the easiest. Obviously, we should all be immediately opposed to arming our teachers or other staff members. I think that not only by virtue of the fact that, uh, as somebody who grew up in the active shooter generation, that, uh, they are not necessarily equipped to stop a mass shooter because nobody truly is, but also because when we are already demanding so much from our teachers, then it is incredibly unrealistic to expect them to also be bodyguards. Uh, so to that extent, school resource officers do, I think, have a place in our schools. That has become an unfortunate reality of the modern era. But what I think we have to stand strong against is, uh, efforts that are justified by concerns for safety, um, but that are ultimately very flawed as far as attempts to get more security cameras, metal detectors, things like that into our schools. I have talked with some parents who are incredibly concerned about the safety of their children and rightly so, but I think first and foremost, we should find a balance between safety and freedom as we make sure that our students don't feel like they're in a prison. Because if they feel like they are learning in a prison, then they will react as any other person would and not have the same educational outcomes. So as far as change to the community, I think that we are doing a largely, uh, adequate job and we should continue our current measures.
Thank you. Candidate Sweeney Moran?
Yeah, I definitely don't want guns in our schools, um, not in our teachers' hands, not in a locker somewhere, not in the principal's hands, ideally not in the SRO's hands, not anywhere. I also am not interested in metal detectors, um, or any of, any of these other sort of increasingly penal-like ideas. I do have three kids and, and they're going to be in school for the next 15 years, which means that I'm, I mean, I'm living in a state of constant terror. There's not a day that I don't think about, um, whether my kids are going to be safe. And keeping kids safe in school is something that I know we all care about and I don't think guns are the way to do it. I think we know that when we're talking about school shootings as opposed to other kinds of mass shootings, that most perpetrators are kiddos who went to the school and who feel, um, angry, sad, hurt, they feel something and, and they want to show that. And the more we can increase, um, social workers, social emotional supports in these schools and do other things to make sure that we're not letting kids fall through the gap, that we're not having any kids who reach that level, um, of not being noticed, I think the safer my kids are going to be. So I would much, much rather feel like my schools are places that are taking care of all the students there than feel like my kids are, are going to go into a lockdown every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Gephardt?
Along with my colleagues on the board, I am adamantly opposed to arming teachers or staff in our schools. I think we're fortunate in Boulder to live where police can get to our schools in a matter of minutes, if not seconds. I know, for example, at Fairview High School, it's a police substation, so they have police constantly rotating through the parking lot so that there is some presence of police there. So I'm against obviously arming any staff and having guns in the school. On the role of SROs, I know that that's a controversial issue in other districts outside of Boulder, but what I've seen in Boulder is we have a great relationship with our SROs. I think I'd like to see a little more training and collaboration with the police department so that we make sure that we continue the good relationship we have with our SROs. And I'd like to see us have a community conversation around safety. I think we do a really good job with that. But for example, tonight at the Adams 12 School District, they have somewhere between 200 and 300 people showing up to have a conversation just around safety and what can we be doing and how can we allocate our resources? I agree we need to put more on making sure our children who may not be noticed and who may be feeling that they need to act out, we need to find resources to support those students. I think that's part of school safety. But I think we could also be having a community conversation around what does that look like and how do we make sure our students are safe?
Thank you. Candidate Zess?
I am also opposed to arming our teachers or any staff. Um, I, I, I think this is another place where strong, um, family, school and community partnerships can really be helpful. I know we have a lot of anti-bullying programs already in place and we should continue to support those. Additional mental health resources are essential for the students as well as the teachers who, um, are also in a pretty stressful situation. School resource officers, um, I think continuing the relationship with them is a good idea and I also feel like they should be, um, they should have good relationships with the students. We had a school resource officer come to a DPC meeting, it was a while ago now, but, um, you could tell that this school resource officer loved her job, she loved the students that she interacted with every day. And if we can get school resource officers that have that kind of passion and compassion, I think that would really help with school safety.
Thank you. Candidate Garcia?
I agree with that. School resource officers, I think, are, and it depends on where you're at, you know? This whole issue of the school to prison pipeline, uh, is a big issue in some school districts. It's not so much here in Boulder Valley, but it could be. Uh, the, uh, depending on who, who that school resource officer is, I think more training for school resource officers are necessary. I don't believe that school resource officers ought to be there just to give tickets to kids, et cetera. But the, the proper training, as, as you said, Stacy, I think is really a good idea. Arming teachers, absolutely no. Teachers are counselors now, teachers are social workers now, teachers in some cases are therapists, teachers now, we don't want them to be body, bodyguards like, like you suggested. Uh, so no, arming of teachers is absolutely no in my mind. Uh, school safety, I think we're doing a lot in Boulder Valley School District as we relate to school safety. Uh, this is one place where maybe we could use CC, uh, referendum CC monies once they come in, uh, for those schools that are not hardened, maybe we can harden those schools immediately and make those things happen.
Thank you. If our timers are willing and our candidates are willing, I think we can get one more question and if we shorten down to 45 seconds, can we do that before closing statements? All heads nodding? Great. So the next question will begin with, um, candidate Sweeney Moran and it's about assessments, educational academic assessments. Some parents feel these assessments are absolutely essential to monitoring aptitude. Some feel that students are overtested. What is your view of student assessments?
It's certainly not the only measure to know how our students are doing or how our schools are doing. There's a lot of other ways to find out, um, what's working and what isn't, but it's an important measure. And when I get the assessments home from school, I, I just had, one of my kids was doing the CMAS last year, it was incredibly valuable information. It's one thing to, um, you know, we do homework together and we hear from the teachers and, and we feel like we know how they're doing, but I do think it's worthwhile as we're getting closer and closer to large-scale standardized tests that are going to have a meaningful impact on the rest of their lives, to understand what these tests look like and to use that information in terms of future programming. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Gephardt?
Even though the question wasn't framed this way, I'm assuming that the question is asking about statewide assessments and not formative assessments and assessments that go into a classroom, so that's how I'm going to answer the question. I think, um, that they do provide some valuable information. I do personally believe that the 11th grade science CMAS is probably not a test we need to continue with since we have about 10% participation at the high school level. I think that, um, our legislators have listened to us and I think they've scaled back. I think there's still could, and tried to make the test more relevant by using SAT and PSAT at the high school level. So I think there is a role for assessments. I think we may not have found the right balance yet, but I think we need to continue to have the conversation.
Thank you. Candidate Zess?
I agree. I, I think part of the issue with assessments over the years has been the communication surrounding them. For years, way back when, when it was the CSAP, everyone said, oh, the CSAP's going away. And then when the, when it wasn't going away and it was the TCAP, parents were up in arms because everyone was told the CSAP was going away and it, it just got so confusing. And I think that the communication around what they're used for and what they're not used for has to be a little clearer. But I also think that students need to learn how to take tests. Um, right now, the ACT and the SAT are still pretty high stakes. That may change. Colleges may choose that they don't, um, subscribe to that anymore, but as of now, they are very high-stakes tests and so our students need to learn how to take tests at some point.
I think formative or even standardized assessments are probably pretty good if in fact it's used to help the teacher help the child. Other than that, I don't agree with state assessments if it's used to measure, uh, school performance, uh, and to put them on school performance frameworks.
Thank you. Candidate Rajak Gopal?
Uh, so I just want to take note of what candidate Zess said because I think communication is an incredibly important aspect to make sure that these tests are being conducted in a way that is actually, uh, useful for the districts, the parents and the teachers and the students themselves. Um, I've been in those rooms where, uh, a teacher tells a body of students that they don't have to take a test and, uh, most, as we have noted with the CMAS, are not exactly willing to put themselves out for more tests. But I think that we should take opportunities where we can to make sure that teachers have the feedback that they need and that they want so that they can improve. And, uh, I think that for students who have concerns about their assessments, that we should make sure that there are other opportunities available to them, like vocational education programs.
Thank you very much. And now we have time for one minute, closing statements, and we'll go in reverse ballot order, starting with candidate Garcia.
Thank you very much for being here. I'm not going to torture you with my Spanish anymore. Uh, the, uh, concern that I have is for all students, but I'm very concerned with 5,000-plus Latino students enrolled in Boulder Valley School District. We need to do more for those particular students, doesn't matter where they're at. We have some excellent bilingual education schools, uh, University Hill is one, Pioneer is the other one. Uh, and we need to have more of those opportunities for, uh, kids in the other schools. Uh, and I believe that those particular opportunities would help with closing achievement gaps, it would help with getting kids ready to be, uh, going into, uh, AP classes, uh, IB programs, et cetera. Uh, right now, the biggest issue that I have is the number of kids that are not in AP classes that are of, uh, kids of color.
Thank you. Candidate Zess?
I want to thank you all for having me today. Um, it, it's a little surreal sitting here because two years ago, I was sitting there moderating this, the candidate forum as the, one of the chairs of District Parent Council. So, um, I am honored to be here. As you can tell from this conversation, we have a really, really good school district. We could make it better, but we have, we should be really proud of our school district. Um, we do a lot of really great things. Um, I look forward to being part of the solution moving forward and thank you all for being here.
Thank you. Candidate Gephardt?
I too want to thank all of you for being here. You can't read the paper, uh, these days without reading whether our democracy is going to fall and whether our democracy's under threat because of all of the partisan politics that are going on. And this is one of the few places where we have a nonpartisan debate about the issues. I have no idea where my, my fellow candidates here fall on any of the partisan issues. I'm really thankful that we're able to have these kinds of discussions where we focus just on the issues and on what's right for kids and what's right for our community. So I hope we can continue to model that going forward because I think that this is a good model for going forward with our democracy and for helping our students and our families understand how to have civil and honest discussions on issues that are even really hard like we've had to talk about tonight. So thank you all for being here and I hope that you will support us as we go forward with the very difficult work of making sure all of our students have the opportunities they need to be successful with their lives.
Thank you. Candidate Sweeney Moran?
Uh, thanks to everyone for being here. I know we didn't get to everything tonight, so I want to take the time to encourage you to reach out. Um, you can find me, I've got a website at lisaforbbsd.com, a Facebook page. Email me directly. I would love to talk more to anybody in this room about anything we got to and you want to hear more about or anything we didn't get to and you want to hear more about. So please, stay in touch. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Candidate Rajak Gopal?
Uh, first, I want to thank you all so much for being here and extend the same invitation. If any of you would like to reach out, um, please feel free to reach out through jforbbsd.com. Uh, I would love the opportunity to chat with you. I have been involved in organizing and public policy for my entire adult life, but the issue that is most important to me is education because I have that lived experience as, uh, a low-income student, as a student of color. And it has shown to me very strongly that if the right people are in the right place at the right time, then we can make sure that there is a light at the end of the tunnel. So if nothing else, then I just want to make sure that our public schools here in Boulder are, uh, doing for our students what my schools did for me, which is make sure that all of you here tonight get to listen to the ramblings of a poor Indian kid from Elbert County.
Well, on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Boulder County and tonight's forum cosponsors, I would like to thank all of our candidates, not only for your participation in tonight's forum, but also for your participation in this democratic process. Running for office and serving as an elected official is really hard work and we appreciate your efforts. Thank you to our forum volunteers with the League of Women Voters, with the District Parent Council and with Impact on Education. And we want to thank the audience here and the folks who'll be watching online for your participation in tonight's forum, for encouraging your family members, your friends, your neighbors, anyone who can to vote in November, to pay attention to these very important school and policy issues. For more information about this election and other elections this year and in future years, you can, um, find that on the League of Women Voters, again, nonpartisan voter information site called vote411.org. We have the ability through our national organization to provide personalized, um, ballot issues, information on candidates and their positions on a whole host of issues, so please check that out. Our League of Women Voters of Boulder County works all year round to make sure that people are empowered and our doc, democracy is strong. If you want to join us in that effort, um, you can visit our website at LWVBC.org or visit the table outside. And now, thank you so much for being so respectful throughout the forum. Please join me in giving our candidates all a round of applause.